Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of Lynchburg City Council for April 14th. Please stand for our invocation by Councilmember Nelson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we bow our heads in reflection. We give thanks for our many blessings, our city, its citizens, and the courageous and faithful service given by so many. May we be mindful of all those whose lives and futures are fraught with peril, hardships, and despair. We ask that tonight's deliberations will reflect tolerance, civility, and a steadfast conviction to be forthright and just. We especially seek to be principled in purpose, find clarity of thought, show soundness of reason, display integrity in judgment, and have purity of conscience. And in this time of novel and unpredictable challenges, let us maintain a cooperative spirit, be emboldened by the worthiness of our purpose, and be sustained by the virtues of our goals and principles. And after we leave this chamber, may it be said that our actions arose from wisdom and a vision that is pleasing to a divine will and purpose. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will have a presentation. Yeah. Hold one moment. Okay, thank you. All right, we have a presentation we're going to do, but we're going to hold on that one moment, and I will continue on. Next, we have tonight's city council agenda is divided into three sections, the consent agenda, public hearings, and general business. The first section is the consent agenda, and this section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. And so we were going to have consideration of approving the minutes of the March 10th and March 24th meetings, 2020 meetings. And number six was consideration of approving the minutes of the March 17th, 2020 minutes. But Councilmember Nelson, and I now believe Councilmember Hegelson, have some comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I apologize, I did not read the minutes until yesterday, and in doing that, I saw just a few little clerical issues I think I would prefer to be cleaned up before it goes into our permanent records, so I ask that we continue this to the next time.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hegelson?
Thanks.
All right, thank you. So we will continue that. Also, I'm going to ask city council to amend its agenda. Councilmember Perro brought up right at our roll call meeting, the Virginia First Cities has an email and information that was sent to us regarding Governor Northram's request to have city council elections changed to November, and so we would like to have a discussion about that. Virginia First Cities needs our answer or vote back from us by Thursday, I believe, by Friday. So if we could go ahead and amend the agenda to have this discussion and have this item added to it, I would appreciate it.
If only you'd just amended it, if there's no objection.
Okay, thank you. Is there any objection to amending? All right, thank you, thank you. All right, now, before we go to that as a discussion point, I would like to do our presentation, and I actually have a presentation to Walter Irwin. Look at that look, he just looked like his head just whipped around. For 40 years of service to the city of Lynchburg, on April 16th, 2020, I think is your anniversary date. All right, so we actually have this here, and I'm not going to open it, so it's for you, you earned the 40 years, but I will come down and present it to you, so.
From six feet away.
And I'm sorry, I think 40 years deserves a standing ovation, I, it's just, I'm sorry. And thank you so much, you not only lead and help lead city council and advise us, but we know in your career field, you are regarded as a leader across the state, and so we're honored to have you here and that you chose Lynchburg to serve the 40 years, so thank you.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure and a privilege to be able to work with so many great city council members and city staff. Over the years, our office has always received a tremendous amount of support, and we couldn't have, our office couldn't function without that support. So while it's pretty clear that most of my time with the city is behind me, I do hope to be able to continue to do this a little longer, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hegelson?
I guess if I could, just say a thing. It's kind of funny, talking to the city attorney last week, and he, I asked him about a specific item, and he said, he said, "Well, I tell everybody at the Virginia Municipal League and my attorney's counsel and whatnot, that I don't have an opinion on anything until a majority tells me." And he kind of reminded me of, you know, some of us married men, that we don't have an opinion on something until we're told of how we have the opinion, so I appreciate those sagely humorous words of wisdom. Thank you, Walter.
All right. Thank you. Any further comments, or, yes, Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just one comment. I know you've, you've heard me say before how much high regard the attorneys across the state of Virginia, particularly, as you said, those dealing with municipal law, hold Walter Irwin, and whenever I should tell him I am from Lynchburg, they say, "Oh, you are very lucky, you've got Walter Irwin." But I also want to say that I had the pleasure of spending three years in law school with Walter, and we graduated 44 years ago, next month, together. So it's been a pleasure, Walter, I was so glad to see you come to Lynchburg.
All right. Well, thank you very much, thank you. Next, would you like to go ahead and discuss the Virginia First Cities?
Where, where, Virginia?
Yeah, let's go ahead and discuss that really quick.
That should probably be in general business.
General business, thank you, I'm sorry. All right. Yep, okay, thank you. All right, next is our public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation, comments will then be solicited from the public, and individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter will refer to council for deliberation. Number seven is the public hearing regarding the petition of Virginia Episcopal School for a conditional use permit in an R1 low-density residential district and R3 medium-density residential district for a master plan at 301 VES Road, 310 VES Road, 314 VES Road, 318 VES Road, 320 VES Road, 340 VES Road, 400, 500, 700 VES Road, 190 Old 160 Lane, 120 Oriskine Street, and 3805 Williams Road. That includes the addition of new academic buildings, new faculty housing in the form of apartment buildings, duplexes, and single household dwellings, student housing, addition of lighted athletic fields, addition of bleachers at athletic fields, and traffic calming to VES Road. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and this is Mr. Martin.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, it's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. This is the petition of Virginia Episcopal School for a master development plan for their 165-acre campus. As stated earlier by the mayor, the properties are zoned primarily R1 low-density residential, R3 medium-density, and R4 high-density residential, with a small portion of RC Conservation District located along the tributaries to the north and south. No development is proposed near or within the RC Conservation Areas, and schools and their associated uses are permitted by conditional use permit in these districts. The proposed master plan is a 15-plus-year vision for the campus that would include building renovations, new buildings, and athletic field improvements. While the school is not tied to any order of these improvements, the submitted narrative indicates a phasing plan. Phase one, that's outlined in red on your screen, would include the construction of a new academic building and improvements to tennis courts and the football field. That would be phase one years one through five. Phase two, six to 10, circled in blue, would include building renovations, new faculty housing, and other athletic field improvements. And phase three, 11 to 15 years, would be new dormitories, academic buildings, other faculty housing, and other athletic field improvements. And then everything else is a 15-plus-year phasing plan. This submitted master plan was well thought out and designed. The majority of improvements are well within the existing campus and should have little to no impact on the surrounding property owners. The city's transportation engineer did not require a traffic analysis due to the recently completed analysis conducted for Westminster Canterbury and the fact that the proposal has no increase in the number of students or employees. The supplemental does propose to light the existing athletic fields, which has proven controversial in the past for this area of the city. However, the narrative indicates that all athletic field lighting would comply with the International Dark Sky Association requirements, with zero light trespass to any neighboring public or non-VES property. And on the left, you can see the typical athletic field lighting style, and on the right is what's being proposed, and you can see how much difference that is, and that's what they are proposing on their own. The planning commission did conduct a public hearing on March 11th and recommended approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions outlined in the resolution.
All right, thank you very much. I now have a statement, and our clerk will be reading it, from G. Thomas Battle Jr., the headmaster of VES, and we're going to allow her to read that into the record.
This is regarding the Virginia Episcopal School 2020 Campus Master Plan Update. In 2015, Virginia Episcopal School embarked on a collaborative effort to plan the future growth and development of its 100-year-old campus. Intended to offer a practical yet visionary approach to the future, the master planning process was designed to hear the voices of VES's many constituencies and blend them into priorities and design concepts. This collaborative approach included a year of listening, investigating, and brainstorming, and included much community input, meetings with students, faculty, and alumni, as well as a school-wide survey that reached parents and alumni around the world. To this end, VES would like to provide an opportunity for the city and public to weigh in on the master plan and the projects contained therein. This will help to provide the confidence and support to fundraise and develop programs necessary to achieve VES's goals and visions, vision for the next 20 years and beyond. In early 2020, VES met with the TRC Planning Commission and hosted a neighborhood gathering pre-COVID-19 in which the participants were able to review the master plan documents and ask questions and voice concerns. All meetings to date have been received with the enthusiasm and support that we also share for the campus and its future in this vibrant community. Any concerns voiced at these meetings, specifically field lighting and project phasing, have been addressed in the documents and are detailed herein. The 269 through 12th grade students who attend VES are represented by 30% day students and 70% boarding students, while about 80% of staff and faculty live on campus. The master plan provides the opportunity to increase the number of boarding students to approximately 80% of the student body, while maintaining a cap on total student enrollment at around 260. Additional housing for students, staff, and faculty will decrease inbound traffic by locating living and working on the campus for more than 80% of the VES population. The master plan proposes traffic calming and pedestrian safety measures for portions of Williams and VES roads, including adding a planted median on VES Road and several clearly delineated pedestrian crossing areas. This is a planned improvement that would be developed with the city of Lynchburg. With the proposed changes to campus, the parking areas have been reconsidered to better serve housing and athletic fields. New additional spaces are designed to better accommodate on-campus staff, offer greater access to athletic facilities, and help to pull event traffic off of VES and Williams Roads and into planned parking areas. Athletic improvements include upgrades, upgrades to all the athletic fields, including new bleachers, turf, lighting, and an enhanced trail system for team and recreational sports. Seating capacities for outdoor gatherings and sporting events are expected to remain the same since enrollment and faculty are projected to remain constant through the 20-year projection of the master plan. Note that all athletic field lighting will comply with the International Dark Sky Association requirements, with zero trespass to any neighboring public or non-VES-owned properties. Phasing of the campus projects will be developed within a dynamic fundraising process as VES's development team builds campaigns for the future of the school. In the first initiative of the master plan, a 15,000-square-foot new academic building is being planned, along with some needed renovations to existing buildings, additional faculty housing, and improvements to athletic fields. Project phases beyond the next 10 years will depend very much on fundraising and economic trends. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Craig. And also, Mr. Battle is available by phone during our public hearing, so if anyone has any questions, he, we can contact him. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? All right, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Thank you. With no one here to speak in favor or in opposition, I will ask our clerk, are there any emails or phone calls regarding this matter?
No, I did not receive any.
All right, thank you. So there is no rebuttal needed. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Council, what is your pleasure on this? Councilmember Perro?
The mayor would like a resolution.
All right, thank you. The motion has been made in second, and do you have any further discussion? Councilmember Perro?
Amen.
Okay, Councilmember Hegelson?
Just a comment, I guess, and, you know, when Mr. Martin, you pulled up those dark sky lights and whatnot, I was just thinking of how great a neighbor they are, and then I think about in our, my own neighborhood, it'd be nice to see the city stadium have lights that aren't just so glaring in the entire neighborhood, plus the amplifier that is just, when they're announcing games and, you can hear it as live as you, as you want in your house, you know, a mile away, so it'd be nice if, if we would do as, as well as we ask others to do, so, anyway. But this looks great, so thank you, VES.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion from council members? All right, thank you. If no further discussion, please cast your vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, we don't, we don't have the button.
Oh, there we go, the voice vote, sorry. New norm, right? Okay, all right, we will do a voice recorded vote. I'll start with Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Walder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perro?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And aye also for myself. Thank you, Councilmember Wright, I'm ready to hit that button, all right. Thank you, and the motion passes seven to zero. Next is the public hearing regarding the petition of TPB Enterprises for a conditional use permit in a B-3C Community Business or Conditional District to allow the construction of a car wash at 7816 Timberlake Road, and staff will provide a brief summary of this request. Mr. Martin?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, this petition proposes the construction of a standalone car wash on property that is currently zoned B3 Community Business District Conditional. The property is recommended for high-density residential use on the city's future lane use map. However, the B3 zoning was established in March of 2014 as a much larger development proposal, which also included apartments to the south. Car washes are permitted use in the B3 districts upon approval of a conditional use permit. The proposed development is directly adjacent to a site that was zoned for and indicated to be used as a car wash as part of a rezoning approved in December of 2018. It is understanding of staff that the petitioner will propose a tire store on this location in the future. A car wash has been previously approved for this development, and as designed, should fit well with other uses in the development. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on March 11th and recommended approval with the conditions outlined in your resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'd first like to say thank you for allowing us to come here this evening in those unusual circumstances, and we do appreciate the efforts that you, as well as city staff, has made to make this evening possible, and we do appreciate the opportunity to speak. This is a CUP for a tunnel car wash at the Midtown Development. Just going through some of the particulars of the project, water and sewer will be available for this project. That infrastructure is being installed now. The traffic design is adequate. The original design for Midtown included a, a large grocery store, which has been removed from the design, but the intersection in Candlewood Court remains the same, so we feel very confident that traffic will be handled adequately. We have a triple lane going to the peep pay kiosk, which will keep queuing out from the private road and reduce impacts to that private road. There is one exit located on the far side of the project, as far away from Timberlake Road as possible, to also reduce the impacts at the signal of Timberlake and Candlewood Court. The landscape shown on the plan is intended to demonstrate the buffering and screening as required by city code, and we wanted to make note that there are no proffers offered. The conditions are acceptable to the developer, and also to remind you that the underlying proffers for the development have not been revised, amended, or removed by the CUP, but are still in place. Mr. Sanders?
Good evening, my name is Daniel Cyrus, I represent TPB Enterprises. First, I'd like to say thank you for your time this evening and consideration on this matter. As Mr. Walton pointed out, we are requesting a CUP for a tunnel car wash located within the Midtown Development on Timberlake Road. As Mr. Martin correctly pointed out, there is an existing tunnel, tunnel car wash site adjacent to this. We are requesting the site adjacent, the site that we are currently proposing in order to decrease some traffic issues that arose with, with the existing site. We've worked with a national car wash consultant, as well as Percuson Horson, to develop this plan. We feel that, you know, based on a feasibility study and based on the layout proposed by both parties, that, that this will be an effective car wash and will be effective in mitigating any traffic impact onto the private or public street. We feel the car wash will well support the 274 multifamily units that are located in the rear of the development, as well as existing multifamily that is in the area. We appreciate your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? All right.
My name is Timothy Santiago, I'm a resident here of downtown, but formerly of Timberlake. I can only, I just wanted to say this to the matter, that when I lived in Timberlake, we, we didn't really have a good car wash. We had a couple that was at gas stations, or some cheap ones closer, not really close to where I lived, which is right over by Kroger over in the vistas. So anytime that a company such as these gentlemen represent wants to put something that would improve the lives of a lot of people over there, with, because with a lot of cars come with a lot of dirt, grime, so I encourage this council to, to approve it, to give the people over there something that can help elevate their life even more, especially in a time when we really need to focus on cleanliness. But other than that, that's all, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Santiago. Is there anyone else who would like to speak and support? All right, anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, with no opposition, are there any emails or phone calls, Ms. Craig, from any citizens regarding this matter?
I have one email from a William Connor, he lives on Moreview Drive, and he is, he writes, "I am writing to oppose granting the subject conditional use permit. The proposed location has substantial traffic from the apartments and the Social Security Administration. Adding this business to the already overwhelming traffic on Timberlake Road will reduce the safety of travelers and for local residents."
All right, thank you very much, and that will be, it is right into the record for this public hearing, thank you. There's no rebuttal needed, and so the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Council, what is your pleasure? All right, Councilmember Hegelson?
You know, Mr. Martin, I know you had stated that this is a, the future land use map recommends high-density residential. Lots of times when we have a project that comes before us, we change the land use map. So I don't think many people are going to be living in a car wash, but especially not a high degree, a high density of them, why don't we have a changing of the land use map on this?
When it previously got rezoned back in 2014, the, the land use map was not changed. I think it is something that we can look at. We're looking at our comprehensive plan right now, there's certain areas of the city that need to be tweaked and updated, and I think this is one of them. If you remember, when this was first submitted, it was an overall development plan that included the apartments and a retail component, and that may be one of the reasons it did not get changed.
Okay, um, you know, I guess when I see this, one, there is a, the car wash was originally planned on being on this site, right? And it's just kind of moving from one place to another?
Yes, sir. So originally, the car wash was proposed here, where it's zoned B5 Conditional. The developer, petitioner, has chosen to move it one site over to right here. Since this is, this is zoned appropriately, and they did that at the time to allow for the car wash, at this point in time, they decided to request a conditional use permit, which allows car, car washes are permitted by conditional use permit in the B3. The end is the same, it's just a different way of getting there.
I guess, so it's really not that big of a difference from moving it from one lot to the other? I guess, but, I guess the bigger issue was originally when we approved it, I think you said in 2014, it was based on a master plan, and the master plan said there's not going to be many apartments there, they're not going to connect in the back, and there's also going to be a nice grocery store, I believe Aldi's was, was the one. Imagine Aldi's employs a whole lot more people than a car wash, and probably a significantly amount, a different amount of tax revenue too, right?
I think what has occurred, when this was originally submitted, it was a different developer, they have sold it to the new petitioner, Mr. Bill, who Mr. Cyrus and Mr. Walton are representing. They've taken a little bit different approach to what types of uses are going to go there. You're right, I, I think that in the beginning, there is kind of a philosophical switch, which was actually difficult for planning staff, because when it was originally proposed, it was a residential community, and the, the uses along Timberlake Road were to support those apartments in the rear, more service-based. the rear, more service-based grocery store. We can't change the fact and the way the market is dictating this site be developed. So that's why we ended up supporting the use.
Now, with the, with the development over there, any of the other phases, has there been, you know, any violations? I know there's been several phases over there, phase one, phase two, phase three, that have kind of been going through. Have you, has there been many violations that you've, that have been recorded?
My recollection is that there have been a few ENS violations, but the site is in compliance now.
Okay. And so with that, you know, the neighbors can, you know, hopefully expect, you know, no more violations. And this one isn't as critical, but as far as what's coming up, I think probably later, some of the other items, I saw some signs for, you know, lots of times we get a development that looks really good, it's going to be business, and then you kind of piece it away, and you kind of throw away the good stuff, and you keep the stuff that may not, the neighbors really didn't necessarily appreciate. And I think there's going to be lots of townhomes that are going to be proposed in the back, or more apartments, the very things that the neighbors objected to. So I'm not going to object to the car wash now, because I think it is moved from one place to the other. But I do realize, and hopefully council realizes, sometimes we get a project that we approve, we like it as presented, and then it changes, because the developer changes in a new philosophy. I can assure you, the neighbors aren't appreciative of that. So this one I can support as it stands, because it moves, but I do hope that we look very seriously at the one if there's more high-density coming up, and hopefully we can change this from high-density to, unless, so, anyway, just.
All right, any, Councilmember Perrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Councilmember Hegelsson raises some, some good points. There's been a history of challenges making sure that this developer meets city regulations, particularly regarding to erosion and sediment control. And I think there's some opportunities to partner with this developer going forward in improving the city overall. But in order to do that properly, there has to be a solid basis of trust, and the developer has to stick to their commitments and follow the regulations, or the city's not going to be willing to go into any sort of agreement with somebody that they can't trust or are going to hold up their end of the bargain. So I believe going forward, that you all should have a conversation with their client and make sure that he or they work really hard to establish trust with the city, and I think that would make this next phase potentially go a lot smoother. And honestly, I've had some conversations, I'm really excited about some of the potentials that they're bringing forward that helps us create more of a gateway into the area, but we have to have that trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further Councilmember discussion? All right, if there's no further discussion, we will call for the vote, and I will start with, again, Councilmember Nelson.
Aye. Well, nobody's made a motion. There hasn't been a motion that was made.
I'm sorry. I have run ahead with the conversation.
You're pushing the buttons, and we're making.
Okay. May I have a motion? Motion has been made in second. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Wilder? All right, thank you. No further discussion from other council members? I'll call for the vote now. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelsson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will also vote aye. So the motion passes. Thank you, and good luck with the project. Next is the public hearing to consider introducing a resolution for the purpose of amending the fiscal year 2020 budget and appropriating supplemental funds and rescinding appropriations for both the capital and operating budgets for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Witt?
Thank you. In March, staff began the normal review of fiscal year 2020, operating and capital revenue, expenditures, revenues and expenditures of the city's various funds to determine if adjustments were needed prior to the end of the fiscal year. Departments were requested to submit any necessary adjustments that needed to be considered. During the same period, local governments across the country began analyzing the local impacts of the COVID-19 public health crisis. Attachment A and Attachment B provides proposed expenditure and revenue adjustments based on both the third quarter review and the recent COVID-19 projected impacts. I'd like to start with Attachment A to walk through those and save Attachment B, which would be the first line there, and I do have a short PowerPoint to give you some further information on those adjustments. So on Attachment A, this is page one of six. We'll briefly walk through these, starting with economic development, $5,237. This is to appropriate funds for a technology zone refund, for a business license tax for a qualifying company for fiscal years 19 and 20. For fire, $85,100, and this appropriates funds from the fire training reserve for maintenance and repairs, and also from the fire training center, I'm sorry, from the pier reserve for specific use equipment and certification pay. Human services, social services, $475,000. This is additional adoption subsidy that's mandated maintenance payments to be appropriated. For public works, $50,000 to appropriate funds for recycle hauling. The fiscal year 21 proposed budget is adjusted to $300,000, but the 2020 budget needs an additional $50,000 in funding to meet the need. In 2020, it was only, we only appropriated $200,000 for the recycle hauling. For the registrar, these are funds needed for projected expenses associated with the June 2020 Republican U.S. Senate primary election. For the sheriff, $13,058. This is to replace outdated computers. $11,158 is contributed by the compensation board, and the other $1,900 is a city fund request. Also for the sheriff, $17,655. This is for projected expenses associated with the temporary detention orders that the sheriff provides. Also for the sheriff, $3,730 for estimated expenses associated with effectively disinfecting and fumigating to protect against the coronavirus in the holding cell areas of all three court buildings. Under transfers, $3,740 is transferred from the fire general operating budget to fire grants to cover an additional local match for that grant. For Children's Services Act, this is a transfer to the general fund, to appropriate funds for increased utilization of the detention center by Lynchburg Juveniles, and also a transfer from city capital projects to the operating budget for funds received from Liberty University to cover VDOT oversight charges for Liberty University Intermural Road Days Three project. For city federal state aid fund, this is grant cleanup for several of our grants. The first is for the Community Corrections and Pretrial Services, additional funds received from the Department of Criminal Justice Services. For fire grants, $3,740 to make up less than anticipated grant reimbursement due to the denial of gear cleaning costs associated with gear modification. For social services grant, this is additional funding awarded by the state for the adoption incentive grant. For public works, this is the annual award for the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality for litter prevention and recycling. And then in non-departmental, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Grant, this is to appropriate funds for the governor's authorized rapid response funding through the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act for employers eligible to remain open during the COVID-19 emergency. The funds can be used to clean facilities and support emergency needs. For the Community Development Block Grant, this is $200,693, which appropriates the main remainder of the Section 108 Bluff Walk Loan Proceeds for the Design of the Police Department New Headquarters. Forfeited assets, this is to appropriate asset forfeiture revenues that have been received year-to-date. On page three, the Children's Services Act, these are additional funds and use of fund balance for expenses in the fund. For the Regional Detention, Juvenile Detention Center Fund, this appropriates additional funds and also the use of fund balance for emergency repair of the sewer line at the detention center. On page four, the Capital Projects Fund, the first one, and for Public Works Engineering, this appropriates the Urban Construction Initiative Interest, $29,607. This is a transfer, we talked about for Liberty University, this is putting that money into the Capital Projects Fund. And the next three are cleanup of appropriations for VDOT-funded projects. On page five, the Water Fund, the first one, no fiscal impact to the 2020 budget, but this is the realignment of two hourly positions, a construction coordinator and a marketing assistant to one full-time senior customer service representative position, and it does take council action to add a full-time position. And then $138,798, and this, these are funds received due to a class action lawsuit, of which we've received $170,937 to date. And the Sewer Fund, $1.5 million is transferred from the Sewer Operating Fund to the Sewer Capital Projects Fund to remain in compliance with the CSO Special Order of Consent that requires the city to annually adjust sewer system reserve funds to equal no more than 25% of the subsequent year's budgeted operating expenditures. For the Airport Fund, on page six, this is $188,000 to appropriate additional funding in the revenues for some small projects, and then $495,000, which is a transfer from Airport Operating Fund to the Airport Capital Fund to appropriate and increase the budget for the second new corporate hangar, and to repair and replace hangar roofs and water penetration issues. And then $240,000 is a transfer to the Airport Operating Fund from the Capital Fund to appropriate funds for 80% state funding for non-recurring maintenance, repair, and equipment purchases. The Airport Capital Grant Projects Funds are the other side of those transfers, and that completes the third quarter request.
All right, thank you. Is there questions there? Oh, well, I guess we have a public hearing. Yeah, it's a hearing. What's my proper order? Do I go through Attachment B first before you do the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
So Attachment B is a list of everything I'm going to talk about, but I would like to go through this brief PowerPoint just to give you a little more reference for the numbers. So in researching for the assumptions that we made, the budget staff has been participating in weekly discussions that have been facilitated by Virginia Tech. That's included finance leaders statewide. There was 110 finance directors and staff on the last call we participated in, trying to understand how other localities are handing, handling the impacts of COVID-19. We've included long discussions with our commissioner of revenue, and I appreciate Mitch being here tonight. The tourism sales team, they provided a survey to local businesses for us, helping us get some more information. We sent out a request to all departments that they review any and all of their revenues, especially their dedicated revenues for fiscal year 2020, to see if we needed to make adjustments. And then we also use Virginia First Cities Fiscal Analytics, the Virginia Government Finance Officers Association, Government Finance Officers Association, the Virginia Municipal League, and the Virginia Association for Counties. Honestly, anywhere we thought we could find a piece of information, we went looking for it. Because, I mean, this really is unprecedented times, and we're just, it's hard at this point, because we don't have any history to fall back on, and we're still waiting on our March revenues to come in, those reports. So we don't have a lot of information to work with. So we really did search any available avenue of where we could get more information. So on page three, or slide three, I just want to walk through the, the bigger of the taxes that we are suggesting that we make adjustments to. So for real property tax, what we adopted in the budget was conservative by about $3 million compared to what's billed. The fourth installment is, we're assuming only a 79% collection rate, in addition to increasing the uncollectible from 2.5% to 3%. So we typically get about 100%, right at 100% of what we bill. So this is very conservative, saying that we know some people are going to be paying some of those in this last installment later. In personal property, we've got the same situation. The adopted budget was conservative by $2.3 million compared to what was actually billed. So we're assuming a 77% collection rate, in addition to increasing our uncollectible slightly. So we know, we know people are going to take longer to pay, and that's what we're trying to anticipate. For motor vehicle license, we're assuming an 80% collection rate, whereas historically we get 100%. For our local sales and use tax, our July through February collections exceeded budget by 8% or $815,235. We're projecting March through June to be down 17%, which is $921,807, or 0.7% annualized. For meals tax, prior to March, collections were on target with budget. So we're projecting March through June, payments be down 41% or 15% as an annualized loss. For lodging tax, prior to June, collections were below budget by 2% or $42,533. So March through June, we're projecting our revenues to be down 79% or 29% as an annualized loss. And amusement tax, prior to March, collections exceeded budget by 6% or $33,680. This projects March through June to be down 86% or a 26% annualized loss. For business license, we're projecting uncollectible to be increasing to 10%. Historically, collection rates are above 100% due to conservative budgeting. And then this next slide. This is all other non-dedicated revenue adjustments. Bank stock tax, Mitch will be presenting later, that we've had to do a large refund to one of our banks for what they had submitted through the years, and then, so this year, we got $753,876. So this is adjusting what we got to bank stock tax to actually what we got, because we get that in one payment. Permits, fees, and regulatory licenses, we've reduced for false alarm programs by $4,500. Fines and forfeitures, $93,625 due to court closure. Our revenue from our use of money and property, this is our interest income that we earn on all of our investments, those type of things. And to date, we've received $264,551 above budget, and we'll also be receiving some funds in May and June. So we do, I mean, that helps us, you know, offset some of our losses. Charges for services, we're suggesting to decrease it, our projection, by $127,407, and this is reductions for the Commonwealth Attorney fines and fees, and also for ambulance fees. And then miscellaneous revenue, currently, our credit card rebate received was about $8,000 more than budget. On this next slide, this is On this next slide, this is, a lot of these are what we're getting back from our department heads. These are dedicated revenue changes. So in these charges for services, we will adjust for a deduction of $193,591, and this is, we won't be receiving the school's resource officer funding from schools, and also our off-duty police fees, because businesses are closed, there's not as much of off-duty. And also library fines and fees, because our libraries closed. The recreation revenue is $113,000 loss because there's no programs. Parking revenue, a slight reduction for parking fees. And then miscellaneous revenue, this includes museums, library, and the community market, simply because they're closed. We're also, we'll need to use some reserves to make whole. So this is $500,000 for the use of task force on the future pre-K-12 education and beyond, the reserve that was set up. $500,000 use of the Greater Lynchburg Transit Company Reserve, and then $380,235 is the use of general fund reserve for contingency. And then we also made some expenditure reductions. $211,316, this is reduced salary and benefit funds for part-time staff due to furloughs. $338,000 reduced department operating funds for training mileage and office supplies due to spending and travel freeze. $20,000 reduced department fuel costs due to savings. $1.5 million in the use of managed vacancy funds, including the hiring freeze, and $1.5 million for reduced school operating local funding. So obviously, it's a moving target, and the more information we have, the more time that passes, and we see the revenues that are coming in, the easier this gets. So we're constantly monitoring the impact of revenue as a result of COVID-19. We're following the receipt of meals, lodging, and amusement taxes on May 20, and we'll have a better idea of how these three consumer-driven taxes are performing, because, you know, so many of them are closed right now, or it's different based on the directives from the governor. And then, of course, if there are significant changes, we'll know so much more by the end of May that we'll be bringing those back at the May 26 work session to council and fill you in on what we know now. So, any questions?
It is, yeah. We'll do that part first and have time for questions in a few. Is there anyone, thank you, Ms. Witt, for your presentation. Yeah. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? All right, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition?
Once again, Timothy Santiago of Lynchburg. As citizens, we rely on the city to provide a comprehensive budget, and changes to a budget and operating cost shouldn't be taken lightly. It should only be done, if necessary, with all the facts. As Ms. Witt has stated, we don't have all the facts on what's going to happen. It might, while this, we are in not completely unprecedented times, the times we are in are troubling. So if we're going to, if US City Council are going to sit here and change an operating budget, change where, how funding is going to go, give it, give it two weeks. Give it to see if we actually peak as, as some new estimates are saying. Because if we peak, then we're going to be out of this sooner than we thought. And this isn't completely unprecedented. 1918, we had the Spanish influenza. Then granted, after the Spanish influenza, we, our economy came back for quite a while until crash, but we did come back. We will come back because, one, Lynchburg has always persevered. We have never, we have never sat there and let anything get us down. This city is, in my opinion, unique in its ability to do so. But through strong leadership, and if you only change operating cost and budgets on extreme basis, I feel that we can continue it for the future. I just, once again, please ask you to wait two weeks before you vote. See if we peak. See what more information we can get. Because the more information, the more we can sit here and say, we've made, we've made a good decision. Our city council acted with all possible information. Because if need be, you can do it in two weeks, or you can say, let's wait another two weeks. Just please wait. That's, that's all I have for you now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Santiago. Are there any emails or phone calls from citizens?
I do have one phone call.
Enter your PIN, followed by pound. You have one new voice message, plus you have three saved messages. New messages, message one.
My name is Phil Stumpf. I'm a Lynchburg resident, and I'm making a comment on the third item before the board. I followed carefully the Lynchburg School Board's discussion of the proposed 2020-2021 budget, and was very impressed by the virtual miracle performed by the superintendent, Dr. Crystal Edwards. She was able to keep the levels of expenditure the same as last year, while also addressing inflation and important emerging needs. But she did add that this pattern of flat budgets over the past several years was not sustainable in the long run. Very important programs such as training and restorative justice would move much more slowly. The Lynchburg City Council will be tempted not to accept even this insufficient flat budget, but in fact, to make cuts in the proposed budget that would be exceedingly harmful for the future of our schools. The COVID pandemic will surely present fiscal challenges for the city. It will present even greater challenges for our schools, especially the lack of preparedness of students as they return to the classroom. The school board and the superintendent are to be commended for developing a flat budget this year, and for including some emerging needs. The city council should definitely not make cuts in that budget. I am a property owner and am willing to pay substantially higher property taxes in order to support our schools. People who are seeking to be good stewards are to be supported and rewarded, not punished with scarcity. When these people are stewards of our children's future, this is all the more necessary. What is at stake is indeed the future of our society. Thank you.
All right, thank you, no more. All right, thank you. The public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Councilmember Hugelson.
Thank you, Ms. Witt, or thank you, Madam Mayor and Ms. Witt. Putting it all in one sentence. Just one question I had on your estimates with regarding real estate tax. So you, you put in there for the fourth quarter, an assumption of fairly large amount compared to normal, as far as uncollectibles. Real estate tax, I think, very different than lots of other taxes where people mail in a check. Lots of real estate taxes, I don't know if you have it broken down, who remits via escrow?
We do.
Okay. And is that how you came up with that percentage? Because it seems like a lot of times if people are making the payment, it automatically has to pay. Bills that have paid off their house, or their, their real estate, were financially savvy enough to pay it off, so they, you know, are maybe not as much as going to miss that last payment. So I don't know, do you do have records of the escrow versus?
And it's about 31% people pay through an escrow.
Okay. 31% is all?
Yeah, and we've done, we, I mean, because I would have been the first to say, I thought it was more like 75%, but we had.
Just off the top of my head, I would have said it's like 85%.
In our billing system, any parcel that is paid through a mortgage company, a bank, something like that, is flagged with a special code to make it easier when those files come in to apply them. And we had IT go through them and run a program to tell us. And Bonnie questioned it, I questioned it the first time it came. I gave it to Bonnie, and she's like, there's no way. So we went through it all again today, and it's about 31%.
I actually asked staff to do a comparison with a neighboring city to see if it's in alignment, because it shocked me as well. So we're digging it a little deeper, but we went through the entire list, and yeah, it was quite surprising.
Unless mortgage companies don't do escrow anymore like they used to.
And sometimes they're not required. I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't say you don't have a mortgage, but you may not pay your taxes through an escrow, because based on your down payment, you don't have to. So there's an option there. We also have, I don't know how many, but I know there are a lot of like small properties that aren't valued very much because they're vacant, they're not, you know, they're, they're unimproved. So there's a lot that goes into that. But we bill in 2020 about $60 million, and 18.7 million is paid through an escrow. So it's about 31%.
And that's about 9,700 parcels.
Yeah.
Crazy. Well, that's shocking, utterly shocking. Never would have thought that in a million years.
We were the same way, so, but we did the math. So this is being very conservative on the other payments that would be private pay.
Yeah. And to just, you know, to, I appreciate what you're doing, because you see the thing that's coming, and obviously, we're not, you know, some of these expenditures are, you recognize revenues coming in less, because you've seen the numbers of what the, the restaurants are paying less. Lots of these expenses, you know, I think that it's, lots of times, it's good to have these things. It helps us kind of really segregate the necessities from the niceties, as Governor Wilder used to always say. And it helps us to say, well, there's some things that we can cut. I was surprised to see some of the items here. $388,000 for travel, and, you know, one and a half million for, extra for the schools, and, you know, again, with less students. So I, I appreciate what you're doing. I think it's good, I think it's prudent, and it's going to hopefully carry over through next budget year, because it's not the small budget. I mean, it's a $370 million budget, so cutting a few million dollars, I know some people would assume that the sky was falling, but when you take a percent or a half a percent, you know, we're looking at, what do you have in here?
Well, this is all general fund, so this would be out of about $195 million budget.
So 3 million out of 195,000?
Million.
Huh?
195 million.
I mean, sorry. Yeah, about 3%. I mean, so, you know, I think it's not, we're not like slashing it in half, and again, the folks that, that are paying the bills, some of them have lost 70 to 80 to 90 to 100% of their income. And so that is what we were trying to look out for, so I appreciate it, and I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion has been made in second. Councilmember Hugelson, do you have any further discussion? All right, Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick topic. Mr. Santiago, I just want to thank you for your comments earlier, and assure you that council does take budget managers very, very seriously. And also, so does the state. By state code, they require us to have two readings to amend a budget. So this is the first reading, and the next reading would be two weeks from now, which is a second vote on that to ensure that this is in fact what we want to do. The downside of that is, we have to, if we're going to implement this, we need to have at least two weeks' notice in order to get it done. But the upside is, if we see a change, if there is something that comes forward in two weeks, we can, we can react to that change. If there is good news, yes, we can react to it. So I think council is going to be prudent in doing, in making this first vote tonight, which I assume will pass, and then reviewing it again in two weeks from now, because we all hope that there could be some changes. And to a couple other of your points, which I thought were good points. City staff has worked to figure out what they can do to slow spending down, recognizing that revenues are going to fall. And so they, hiring freeze, and that accounts for almost $1.5 million. The unfortunate furlough of 43 of our part-time, of our part-time employees, this is a significant contribution, and that will affect services. But I think most of the work that you all have done basically allows our services to move on. And those furloughed employees are the employees that may have conducted classes for, at the rec center, because we can't gather in the rec centers right now. So those sorts of things, the library staff, because we can't gather in the library right now. And then, because the school systems aren't operating like they usually operate, then there's about $1.5 million worth of savings from the school systems, too. So these are, these are expenditures that are not being made, but don't have a significant impact to current services. So I think we're in an okay balance on this, because, you know, we've got to balance this loss of revenue somehow. But I did want to thank you for your comments, and, and it's always important to have, have citizens speak, and especially inform citizens, and you've obviously been listening, so thank you. Thank you for your, for your comments. I would like to point out a little bit of a kudos to our staff I've received from Virginia First Cities, and I, I think I may have gotten a little bit of an early copy of it, because we're on the board, this, this, one of the spreadsheets that Mrs. Witt referenced, that was a tool that municipalities of Virginia First Cities could use to help understand what these revenues are going to be. Well, about, maybe a couple hours later, I got an updated one. And I said, oh, oops, okay, well, I'll send this one out again. And I was quickly, quickly corrected by our staff, with pride from them, that, who was it? Megan Palmer, who was one of our budget analysts that works remotely, who was one of the pioneers of the candy supply during past public budget sessions, when she was sitting, sitting right there, found an error in the spreadsheet and suggested a correction to her, and, and because of the city of Lynchburg, that spreadsheet was corrected. So kudos to our team for, for diving in this and, and helping everybody else also. And just one related question, I thought, I'm sure you all put, I'm going to understate how much effort you all put into putting this together. I, I thought the numbers were a little interesting, 79% collection rate, 41%. They, they're very specific. I would have thought it'd be more generalized. So can you help, help me understand how, how you made it more specific and more general? I know that's a pretty vague question, but I, I would have figured, oh, it's going to be about a 50% downturn in this. Instead, it's 49.1%. How did you figure it out so exactly?
Well, part of it is, historically, what we've collected to date, based on, you know, what we've collected to date this year, where we, you know, the percentage, you know, if we usually collect 100%, and we're, you know, here now, we typically get this. So we, we based it, it's just math. I mean, just trying to figure out where we currently are and where we need to get to, and then anything that could influence that. How much, like for real estate, how much is paid through an escrow account, so that we pretty much can count on that money, that type of thing. And I don't know, Mitch, I don't know if you want to pipe in or not. Mitch has a wealth of knowledge of our restaurants, personal property tax, you know, lodging, all of our businesses, and then working with Marjette as well. She's a wealth of knowledge on businesses as well, and just, I don't know.
So instead of the dartboard that I heard over here, which I was thinking, oh, no, I was thinking the same thing, you know, what are we going to have, it's about 15% here. You all actually worked the numbers and then developed the percentage off of the numbers.
We spent 12 hours, social distancing in a large conference room, trying to just do the best we can.
All right. Obviously, there's a significant amount of effort. Thank you for your team.
Thank you. Any, thank you, Councilmember Perro. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I also wish to express my thanks for all of the effort and work that went into this. effort and work that went into this. I will comment just quickly on the, the lack of escrows. I do think we all know, we have a lot of commercial property in Lynchburg.
That's true.
And there are a lot of commercial loans. And to my experience, commercial loans do not include escrows.
That's a great point.
That's a business expense. So that wasn't surprising to me. But we all have heard that hope is not a strategy. And I think what you're doing are very appropriate strategies to deal with, as I said in the invocation, novel and unpredictable challenges. So I hope we don't have it as dire as it is, but I think these are good strategies. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yeah, thank you for the information. For, for start, we appreciate it. What is that total amount that you requested a move over for the reserve part?
If you go back to attachment A, it's about a reduction of 2.6 million, 6 million, I'm sorry, 3.5 million total. So it's almost $5 million as a reduction in revenue, and then we're using the committed and assigned fund balance and the reserve for contingency. So it's a net of about $3.5 million outside the reserves.
Okay. Right. And again, thank you, because I know, we don't know all the factors yet because it's such a moving target. But again, we need to start preparing for this target. So I do appreciate, even though it's not really a dart, but I do appreciate the, the efforts and then sort of looking at sources of where we can receive the funds from to continue forward. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I guess a couple of questions, just on, and thanks for all the hard work. Just a couple of questions on the numbers themselves. So for the task force, we reduced the 500,000. That leaves how much remaining in their reserve, if any?
700,000.
700,000. And then for, for furloughed staff, when, when do the furloughs take effect? Or have they already taken effect?
They've taken effect.
Okay. And so they save us, it saves us approximately how much?
211.
Over the course of, let's say, two and a half?
Through the, through the.
Two and a half months?
Yes.
Okay. And do we suspect that we'll be continuing beyond? Obviously, we don't really know.
So the folks, the part-time folks that have been furloughed have been told that it's indefinite because we don't know where we're going.
Okay. And then lastly, the schools operating. So this is the 1.5 million that they identified that they won't need for the remainder of, you know, the year. That's where that figure comes from. They provided it more or less.
That was a little bit of coincidence.
Yes.
Oh, it was a happy bit of coincidence?
Yes.
Well, great. Okay, very good.
Total transparency here.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. I'm glad.
Love when a plan comes together.
I'm glad to hear that everybody's in alignment. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thanks.
All right. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Dolan?
Thank you. I just think, I just want to compliment you and your team. You've done an extraordinary job. And I realize that this is a moving target. None of us know where it's going, and I really have to commend you for what you've done. Thank you very much.
All right. Any further discussion? And I echo all of the thank you. So thank you very much. All right. If no further discussion, we'll go ahead and take a vote. And I will start with Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perro?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelsson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I also myself. So that motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wolf.
Five ayes and two yeses.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ayes. Next is general business, and this section includes general items of new business. Number 10 is consideration of introducing a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 general fund budget and appropriate $224,965 with resources from the general fund reserve for contingencies to refund overpayment of bank franchise tax for tax years 2012, 2013, and 2014 by BBNT for operations in the city of Lynchburg. And Mr. Knuckles will present us with.
Madam Mayor?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Can I make a statement, please?
Yes, go right ahead. Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm a stockholder in BBNT. It does, it is considered a amount enough to be a personal interest. However, I am one member of a much larger group, and therefore, I believe I am able to vote in an unbiased manner on this. And I'll ask Mr. Irwin if I said that correctly. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Perro. Yes, Councilmember Nelson?
I do have the same disclosure to make, and although it does not, for the same reasons as articulated by Councilmember Perro, doesn't rise to be a statutory interest. I do want to disclose that for purposes of saying that I can be objective and unbiased.
All right. Thank you. Thank you both. Are any further disclosures? All right. Mr. Knuckles, thank you.
Madam Mayor, member of council, banks, just like us, where we pay annual income tax on our income, banks pay an annual income tax on their equity. And in this case, I'll just read through this. Bank franchise tax is based on total equity capital minus retained earnings and taxable real estate in the Commonwealth. The tax rate is $1 per hundred with a maximum tax of $18 million. The bank franchise tax return is processed by the Department of Taxation. That's very key in this, that it's done by the Department of Taxation. 80% of the tax is due to the localities where the bank maintains branches. The tax due each locality is determined by the locality's percentage of deposits versus the total deposits in the Commonwealth. In this case, BBNT filed initial returns for, in 2013, 14, and 15, which represented years 2012, 2013, and 2014 respectfully, and paid the amount of monies indicated on those returns. The department, BBNT filed amended returns for those years claiming they did not subtract retained earnings and historic tax credits from their returns. The Department of Taxation initially denied the amended filings over a dispute pertaining to the retained earnings. In October of 19, which is five years later, the Tax Commissioner overruled the denials of the department and sided with BBNT. The department notified localities such as Lynchburg that owed more than $100,000 in refund in early July, and I received the official notification for refund February 27 of 2020. And BBNT has agreed not to seek any interest from localities on the refunded monies if refunded by May 1st.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Knuckles.
I'll be glad to ask any questions if I can.
All right. Thank you very much. This did go to the Finance Committee on March 24, 2020. And so I will turn to our chair, Councilmember Hegelsson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And as, as the Commissioner has just stated, I think it was pretty benevolent of BBNT not to, even though it was their return, I realize, but lots of times, people request back not just the tax, but the penalty. We charge people a penalty when they don't pay on time. And I think at, at our Finance Committee, we did some rough calculations, what those, that actual interest payment would have been for that 225,000. It'd have been about double, you know, based on our cost of capital with interest and late penalties. I think Mr. Irwin has said that sometimes we charge 10%. So therefore, people can charge back 10%. So anyway, very thankful. Hate to see that this is happening now. Obviously, it was not timely, as the Commissioner has stated. Nothing to do with city of Lynchburg. It's filing somewhere else. It just happened to be falling at probably one of the worst times, yeah, a bad time, I'd say, because last month, if you remember, we had to pay back something, another out of the reserve for contingencies. This is the second one. But we'll, we're still counting on what we did the last, our third quarter adjustments was, I think, 380,000 was still assumed to be in the reserve for contingency. So that's after this amount, right?
The balance after these adjustments and that, it's about 255,000-ish.
How much?
About 255,000.
Okay. I was just thinking off the top of my head, 380. But so, we still have money in there. And so Finance Committee met, we discussed this, and obviously, make a motion for approval by the committee.
All right. Thank you. There's no need for a second. Is there any further discussion? All right. I will take a voice vote. Again, Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perro?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelsson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will also go with an aye. Thank you. All right. Next is discussion regarding how to conduct council meetings during COVID-19 emergency. And staff will provide a brief summary. And Mr. Irwin, thank you.
Counsel, tonight, we wanted to provide you with a report on what other localities around the state are doing in regard to holding meetings. Last week, I sent counsel a summary from the Virginia Coalition for Local Government that summarized what other localities are doing. And as you could see from that summary, localities are doing a variety of things. Some localities, they are continuing to meet physically. Other localities have switched totally to electronic meetings. In some localities, the members of the governing body are meeting, but they're not allowing the public to attend the meeting. The public can only participate electronically. And in some localities, members of the governing body, some members are showing up in person. Other members are participating electronically. So each locality is adopting meeting procedures that seem to be the best suited for, for its community. All localities that hold electronic meetings do include provisions for allowing the public to view the meetings and to offer comments by email, voice messages, or other electronic means. For information purposes, I also sent counsel a copy of the procedures the Richmond City Council adopted last week for the boards, commissions, and other public bodies within the city of Richmond, so that any public body that holds an electronic meeting would be operating by the same guidelines. Those procedures were based on model procedures that were developed by representatives of the Virginia Municipal League, the Virginia Association of Counties, and local government attorneys throughout the state. If counsel has any interest in adopting procedures for electronic meetings, those could be used as a starting point and could be amended and revised as counsel saw appropriate. But we just wanted to let counsel know what was going on around the state in case counsel had any interest in pursuing this matter further.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Counsel, what's your discussion and/or pleasure regarding the discussion of the online council meetings? Anyone have any thoughts? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I said back on March 24, when we discussed these same issues, it, a mechanism like this is probably a worthwhile tool to have in our tool belt of policies and procedures. But my concern is that the opportunity for abuse may be high under certain circumstances. I certainly do not have any objection to coming up with a policy to allow members of council, if we are meeting here and for some compelling reason, someone has to be away for family, medical reasons, and for an extended period of time, to have a mechanism whereby that absent council member could participate, vote, contribute in discussion, and not be excluded. And although that hasn't happened in my 10 and a half years on council, it certainly could. So I think it's worthwhile to try to come up with that option. But the second option is what we're talking about here. If it's not physically possible to have a quorum physically present, what do we do because of this, whatever circumstances may be presented? And I would want, first of all, there to be an emergency declared by an authority that's higher than just someone in the city. Obviously, the governor's declared that emergency here, and the city manager has reinforced her agreement, and we endorsed that declaration. But I think some compelling emergency has to exist if we can't physically be assembling. The second is that we need to deal, that meeting should deal with only emergency-type issues and not necessarily routine items that deal with ordinary operation of the city. And the items or issues that it should deal with, in my mind, should be something to address the emergency, an issue that is directly related to either resolving the emergency or which has happened as a result of the emergency that we, we have to deal with and address. I would want the meeting to specifically identify not only what the emergency is, but also what the issues are and why it is that they can, cannot be resolved except by council acting upon them. So it's very clear and precise. Then the third, the other point, the next point I would want to have is a supermajority of council agree to convene the virtual meeting. So it's not a simple majority who kind of wants to have this virtual electronic meeting, and there are some others who don't think it necessary. I think we have to have the same sort of supermajority, which we often have when we deal with gifts of assets. That's not too hard to obtain. If the compelling public interest is high enough, I think we could probably get a consensus. So those are the things that stand out in my mind as to the standards and parameters that would have to exist before I would want this mechanism to be able to be used in making decisions about our city. Certainly, we've got doctors and nurses and medical people who every day are dealing and facing the forces that may lead to their peril. They can get together and deal with that. Why can't we convene? Just simply because there's a challenge. We have first responders who are 24/7 facing some dire circumstances. If they can do that, then certainly we can make the effort to do the same, to conduct business once a week or once every two weeks. So I would want to set, set the bar very high before we decide that we can conduct the people's business in some way that's behind closed doors and not readily available to most people in their circumstances.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. So I think Councilmember Nelson made a number of excellent points. There has to be a really compelling public interest to, to hold a virtual meeting. And I guess I would ask staff whether they are able to facilitate, whether we have the infrastructure available to, I mean, certainly, because this is not, this is more than just like a Zoom call, right? It's also inviting public input and comment and allowing the public to participate in some fashion. And I'm sure other cities have already been dealing with this and have figured out tools that make such a, you know, public forum possible. And I'm curious if we've explored those and if we feel like we have a good handle if we were to move to a virtual format, whether we have the infrastructure in order, you know, to do that.
So we could certainly use, and Rob might be able to respond to this better, but we could certainly use the MeetMe platform on Microsoft that I think you all have on your tablets.
Would the public be able to participate?
Teams, I'm sorry. Yeah, Microsoft Teams.
I do have MeetMe set up on this phone right here. But if you want me to look into Microsoft Teams, I can do that.
I mean, I suppose setting aside whatever the actual tech, technology, you know, the actual mechanic of it is, do we have a, a format so that not only council members can participate and staff, but also the public?
Yeah, I think we did that really successfully with both the budget public hearing and this evening with the comments, with the call-in at the, you know, in real time, plus the message that was recorded earlier.
I'm saying, if we're, so if we're not here, you, I'm just saying, do you see what I'm saying? That if we're all virtual?
If we're online.
Can we facilitate the same kind of meeting that would happen in this room virtually?
There'll still be staff in here, right?
There'll still be staff.
Yeah, I think so.
From the camera, I'm sure, like, from the camera on a computer screen that shows all of us on there.
Yeah.
That one there.
Yep.
The computer that will be, he can, Steve can hook the video into that computer so that the public can see the meeting.
Okay.
Is the answer to see?
Yes.
Make sure, because, you know, I also don't want to be, the threshold to be so high. Because I, I agree, the public's business should not be conducted behind closed doors. But before we do anything, I want to make sure that we actually have the ability to, to do it in an open fashion in which the public can participate. do it in an open fashion in which the public can participate that doesn't also require us to be here.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Perro?
That brings up an interesting question. So staff would have to be here.
I don't actually know that they should have to be here.
Well, that's, that's what I heard. Is that?
That's what they said.
But I'm not necessarily compelled that that has to be, has to be the case.
My point is, if staff, why would we ask staff to be here and not be willing to be here ourselves? You know, if staff didn't have to be here, then that's, that's one thing. But I think we shouldn't be asking staff to be present, and then we're not willing to be present. Yeah, sure.
I guess the one thing would be just if there's one person on a camera. I mean, the guidelines is the distancing of where we have signs up. But if you have one person on a camera in this entire room and one person over there manning the phones, I think you have, you know, pretty ample space in between, so.
So just got a message from Ms. Warren, said we could do it.
I was about to say, if we could research or have everyone kind of the thoughts and ideas that are coming out of this dialogue right here, if, yes, communications and engagement could research it. Councilmember Wilder?
The way the world is changing, it's good to have a system in place, because we just don't know where we're going, how far we have to go down that, down that rabbit hole. So it's good to have some kind of a system in place if it does get worse. So if something else happens in America of some sort, we have a kind of a plan in place.
And just since the Budget Public Hearing, Robert, we put the phone in here, right? So we installed a phone in here to be able to enhance the technology capabilities.
Councilmember Huggelson, thank you, Mr. Vartje.
And I guess there's a lot, I agree with Randy. I mean, that's why, you know, the bar needs to be very high. I mean, so I recognize there's lots of things, but as Councilmember Perro said, I mean, if it's so bad, well, we shouldn't be meeting then. If it's so bad that you can't have one person, or we shouldn't be asking, you know, our first responders to be out there. And, you know, so I think the bar needs to be raised very high. And I think, you know, as the gentleman said earlier about the budget, you know, when you look at, we've been through this before with 1918, and we've came across before we even really had running water and indoor plumbing. I think these numbers have come in vastly different what the estimates were. The estimates came in originally, we're at 3% of what the estimates, the new estimates of as far as fatalities have come in, about 3% of what the original estimates were. You know, Donna predicts budgets based on off by a percent or two. So I think things are, obviously, I don't want to jinx it, but I think we're coming out of the woods. I think we're getting on a much better trajectory. And it should be something that's such a high bar that we have got to do something that has to be such urgency and immediacy. And I don't think we do that, because there's lots of things that we can operate on, and nor should we, I think we still need to have everything above board as much as we possibly can and up in the open, so.
I I'm very sorry. I'm sorry. Were you done? I'm sorry. I do agree with Councilmember Nelson on setting the high bar and the parameters. Your statement just now, I'm a little confused, but I think, you know, the numbers were predicted, but it's also because practices were put in place early enough that numbers were reduced. And so I think a combination of the practices and the addressing of COVID-19 in a way that responsibly helped keep the numbers limited, I think contributed to the numbers. I did have a question regarding, it was regarding something Councilmember Huggelson said, and the communications team. Let me think about that. Does anyone else, Vice Mardola?
No, I'm just going to say that I think that Councilmember Nelson is right. It has to be an emergency situation, so we'd have to, you know, carve that out to see what that looks like. I don't think that, I think it needs to be further defined, very definitely, but I think that's the way it should be, very definitely.
I just thought about it. I'm sorry. My second point was that, yes, we are elected officials, but I believe when you start putting us in the category of first responders, I have kind of a problem with that, because first responders are just that. They are public safety first responders, and that is their, their job, duty, career, and they are there to protect and serve. But, you know, we may be very well doing more damage by not adhering to the guidelines that are set in place. We are not on the same level, in my opinion, and others may differ, as first responders. And so I think as citizens and as those elected to represent citizens, if there comes a time that we have to adhere to guidelines which help first responders in the line of their duty in lessening the impact on them, because we're out roaming around and having meetings and doing things that maybe not, may not be to the best of the guidelines, I just don't like putting us on the same level as the first responders, as elected officials. And that's my, my personal opinion. But Councilmember Perro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just trying to think how we come to resolution on this. And I've got a couple technical questions for Mr. Nelson, and then I think I've got a suggestion. So if, if it, I like the idea of a supermajority to enact this. I think that's, that's wise, because it stipulates a clear sense of emergency and emergency protocols and a strong reason to get behind this. How does that, what's the sequence in which that happens? That emergency would be, would it be a called special council meeting, that emergency would have to be declared specifically? Or would it be, and then the next meeting would be electronic? Or how would you see that working?
Thank you for the question. I think, first of all, someone in a position of authority to declare emergencies has to make that declaration and state why. And then if we have a meeting that's either routinely scheduled or one that needs to be called, the city manager can ask counsel to assemble and convene in a virtual location, in a virtual way. And before, when we do, when we do, we have to agree virtually or electronically that we have a supermajority and we agree this is necessary. So it happens in the process of opening the meeting. And then again, as stated, the, I'm going to take this off. The, we have to articulate what is the compelling reason and what it is we're going to deal with on the agenda. So it's as limited and restricted as possible, and we only deal with those things that we have so identified. Now, I don't think, I really don't think we need to be, we should craft the language of the resolution tonight. It needs to be very artfully drawn, written, and I trust Walter Irwin, and I would be happy to meet with him to come up with something for counsel to consider. This is, this is not just a resolution like we're dealing with, dealing with a zoning issue or some aspect of the budget.
Well, Mr. Nelson, that's going to be exactly my recommendation to counsel. I was just trying to figure out the procedure. So the very first thing that would happen in this special, in this meeting electronically would be either ratification or confirmation that this was the correct way to meet, and it would take a supermajority to do so.
And we do something like that when we go into closed session. We, we vote on it, and we go.
So I was going to suggest that maybe Mr. Nelson and Mr. Irwin modify the language, because it sounded like, I think, most of us were in agreement with what Mr. Nelson was proposing, or in, in concept, anyway. And, and then to bring that language back to us for, for review.
Thank you, Councilmember Perro. Councilmember Huggelson?
What could be added on the supermajority language would be, I think it's what's in the General Assembly now, is that if there is an emergency call that requires a supermajority on the actual vote, not just saying this is an emergency session of which you just have a slim majority, but that because it was such a, an emergency session that required emergency action, that is where the supermajority, I think, takes place at the General Assembly now, where you have to have, I think it's even more than super, I think it's 80/20. I think it's an 80% almost where you have to get a really big majority if it's in a, in a, an emergency-type session. So I think, so, so for example, if we have an item that was routine in nature, you know, that shouldn't be brought up in the meeting like you're talking about in an emergency session. But if the city manager says, hey, we have something that's very, it's a bad, it's a dire emergency, we need to bring it up. And then if it is a dire emergency, as you stated, it'd be simple to get a supermajority as presented by a, and I think that's a good bar. I really do like that and appreciate that concept. Mr. Nelson?
All right. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, oh, Councilmember Nelson?
I do want to say, make one other comment, and I appreciate Mr. Irwin's intentions, I think, is to try to find a way that we can convene on routine matters if, for whatever reason, we cannot physically get here. And the only situation I would imagine that may arise in is if this building suddenly is uninhabitable and we can't get here. We'd like to, but, but anyway, but continuity of government is not just dealing with emergencies, it's also dealing with routine things that have deadlines and standards that we have to meet. So what I'm talking about is not addressing that, although I think it is worthwhile to conceptualize in that area, too.
So we were actually building a city hall community operations plan that we were doing before COVID, so that's timely.
It's in the works.
Good, great.
We were hoping to exercise it in April, but we're not going to do that.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Perro?
I'm sorry to delay with this. Just one more, one more thought that you reminded me of. But, and help me, help me remember if we've done this, or this was the previous, this was approved in the previous resolution, the previous ordinance that we passed two weeks ago. If there is for a reason that a council member cannot be present, if there's a, as long as there's a quorum present, then that council member could potentially attend electronically if the other council members agree to it?
You know, that's correct. Under the continuity of government ordinance that city council adopted, you know, you could do that, and that would be what some other localities have done. They have, other localities have switched to a format where as many members of the governing body as feel comfortable doing so physically attend, and then other members participate electronically, and they do not require that there be a quorum physically present. They allow each council member to decide, you know, whether or not they feel comfortable attending the meeting.
Do we currently have the ability, if a quorum is present physically, then to have a member attend electronically?
That would be,
As long as there's a quorum physically.
That would be covered under the ordinance.
Under the
Continuity of Government Ordinance,
That we passed.
Which says, notwithstanding the requirements in the Freedom of Information Act, if we deem it appropriate to carry out essential government functions, we are going to allow, you know, council members to participate electronically, either partially or completely.
But that's, but that's not this ordinance, that was
No, I mean, that was the continuity of government ordinance that city council adopted on March 24.
Yes, thank you.
Tonight, all council was doing is getting information about what other localities are doing in case city council would decide it might want to try some of those options if it thought it necessary to do or appropriate to do so.
Thank you.
And just one piece of clarification on what you said, which I hope that's not the case. If there is a quorum under the ordinance, and then if there's a quorum that is present, it's not a function of the members that are present to vote to allow the other person to vote or not, right? That's what you just, I think, kind of alluded to. But I thought it was if there is a quorum and one person can't be there for whatever reason, they can't be blackballed or say, hey, we don't want you here because of such and such. I don't think, I It isn't, right?
No, the ordinance we adopted doesn't have any specifics of how it would work. If you look at what Richmond adopted, that does contain the specifics. Richmond said, any member who logs in is considered to be physically present for holding a meeting and can do anything as if they were physically assembled.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? And if not, then Councilmember Nelson will work with Mr. Irwin on the language and bring it back to us. So thank you very much. Next, we will discuss the Virginia First Cities, yeah, request from us. And this is in an effort to represent the members of Virginia First Cities, especially those with scheduled May 2020 elections, and they are asking for feedback from each council regarding the Governor's Amendment 36 regarding additional enactments for election. So everyone has had time to review. I will turn to Councilmember Perro, who is our representative on Virginia First Cities.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I've talked to you about earlier this afternoon before knowing that it was going to be amended to the agenda tonight, I hope you have a chance to read this. As I said, the VML has been a proponent of a May election. Virginia First Cities was also a proponent of a May election. The governor decided to offer an amendment for a November election, and I will make the motion that we, that you direct me to vote on behalf of the city to reject the Governor's Amendment at the Virginia First Cities Board Meeting.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second to reject the Governor's Amendment 36. And do you have any further discussion?
Just, just briefly, the way I understand how the session works, there's not an opportunity to amend further or change any language. This is a straight up or down vote that the General Assembly has as well. So, you know, either the General Assembly is going to accept it as it is, or they're not.
Councilmember Huggelson?
Thank you. I second that motion just because I'm not, one, I'm on the ballot, and several of you are as well. And so we've been planning on a May election. You anticipate it, your campaign is geared for it, you do all the different things, the mailings, the campaign expenditures. Granted, I realize things happen, but the voter registrar is actually working very judiciously. I think there's been close to 2,000 ballots already. And so to say, well, we're going to either sequester these 2,000 ballots and we're going to put them in a box and keep them for six months, or we're going to discard, discard 2,000 people who decided to either vote or request and is now discarded, that is, that is not good. And as Councilmember Nelson alluded to earlier, I think both of which would have been good points, but if they can't amend it, you know, one, when somebody declares this is an emergency and then they declare the remedy, that needs to be separate. I mean, that needs to have separation of those powers. You can't just say, well, I declared emergency, and now I declare that I'm going to change everything. That is, that is, that is terrible, quite frankly. I wish the supermajority powers would be in there, that, and normally, when there's an emergency session, when it's emergency language that would affect actually this fiscal year, normally legislation affects July 1st and forward. Normally, if it's an emergency, it requires that supermajority vote, and hopefully that would still be the case. You know, but it, I mean, that's, that's a rotten thing. I mean, and two, to couple that with a presidential election. I mean, we're all city council members, and we're the highest people ever elected, we realize. But we're actually, the President of the United States on the same ballot, the highest office with, I'm one of them, so I'll, the lowest office. I mean, granted, I'm sure there are other low offices. But, I mean, that's not what you want to have on the same ballot being in November. So, and I appreciate that, and I hope the rest of you.
I appreciate Councilmember Huggelson, they could confuse you with the highest land in the office. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, I got you. No, thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I mean, you know, ordinarily, I would probably agree if the governor, certainly I would agree, if the governor's going to try and change the election for, for a sort of specious reason, absolutely. I think in this case, you know, the issue is a pandemic, and we still have folks who are going into the registrar's office right now to vote in person, right, in advance of the, in advance of the election. We, you know, we have, right now, anyway, the election is, there's no move afoot, as far as I can tell, to do a mail-only election on May 2nd. So theoretically, for now, anyway, polls are still going to be open. We will expect them to be staffed with poll workers, if not all of them, and some of them. And, and I have great concerns about the safety of both voters and poll workers if the election were to continue. if the election were to continue on, on May 5th. So I think, I would just note, the city manager forwarded us an email from the Electoral Board that they have endorsed the governor's move to shift the election back to, to November. So I think, I think, you know, health and safety here is paramount. And so I would be opposed to Lynchburg endorsing, or I guess refuting, the governor's suggestion.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Wilder?
Thank you. I really, have really no preference, whether it's May or November or November, or June, I heard that as well. My concern, again, is for the poll workers and also the persons that are voting. So because of the situation we're in, a pan epidemic, I would hate for a person to come and vote and get sick, or a poll worker to get sick as well. I haven't heard any measures of what protection measures are going to be in place for the poll workers or for the, for the voters. If they were to say it's option of all, just do all mail-in, I would feel more comfortable by them keeping it on May the 5th. But since I haven't heard any other thing about what they're going to do to protect the poll workers or protect those that are voting, I do have concern on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Higginson?
Just, I know other people are going to speak, but just to that, if you remember a few weeks ago when the electoral official came, Christine, she had said that they've requested, and I think the fire chief has offered face shields, they've offered the shields, they've offered the PPE, they've offered the masks. So all of those things are set up, and so with regarding the safety, I believe, have been completely offered, so.
They did it for the voters, too.
Yeah, well, absolutely. So when the voters are coming, and most of them, you know, I mean, I don't know if anybody's been shopping in a grocery store recently, but there's lots of people that are out getting bread and milk and paint and, and Ed Lowe's is packed with azalea purchasers. And so I think they stand in line, there's easy ways to mark off six feet, lots of different things, and I think, you know, these are folks that are actually voting, so.
Okay, oh, Councilmember Wright, followed by Councilmember Perro.
Thank you. And I would offer back in response to that, that while it's maybe true that PPE is being offered to poll workers, most of our poll workers are in the highest-risk demographics. I mean, these are not folks who really can afford to be, even if they're willing to show up at all, which we, I guess we don't really know yet whether we can even get enough poll workers to show up. And let's say we can, and then, of course, a lot of them are going to be in the highest-risk demographic. And I think, you know, the concern, right, is that people will, it'll necessarily force long lines. We saw this in Wisconsin this past week where by pressing forward the election, it ultimately resulted in a public health fiasco. So I don't think that we should, obviously, to the extent that our voice has any sort of, carries any weight in this conversation, I don't think we should be encouraging an election on May 5th. I'm sorry, I've talked enough.
Councilmember Perro?
You know, it, one of the disappointing things about a May election, but could help us this time, is I've been, you know, I've seen a number of May elections now, and I've yet to see a single line. It's a very low turnout election.
Councilmember Nelson?
What I have to say is pretty much would be a repeat of what's already been said. I do have a great deal of affection for local elections not being held when there's a statewide or a national election. The issues get convoluted, obscured, and the shadow of the larger election overwhelms the very cogent issues that need to be considered on the local level. Likewise, as has been said, money's been spent on campaigns and advertising and signs. To drag that out for another six months is, would be hard on the candidates, and I'm glad I'm not one of them right now. Votes have been cast, and under the protocols, those votes would be thrown away. And some of those voters, if they're still around or still can vote, would have to do it again. No doubt, the voice of the local registrar, though, rings very high to me. We are talking about the safety of persons who are more vulnerable than the, our first responders, for example. And if it cannot be carried out, and they're not going to be there, we're not going to have an election with integrity in May. So I, I'm pulled in both directions. I would agree to keep it the same, but at this point, I, I'm going to err in favor of the registrar's office, the local volunteers, and the personnel that make our elections happen effectively here and not force something on them that they might not be able to sustain. And that would be just as bad as all the other consequences that we've talked about.
Well, I say it was going to be really self-serving. No, my problem, my problem with moving it to November is, much like yours, Councilmember Nelson, is that I think local elections get lost in a state or a national election. And I think also they become more partisan. So for that reason, I would not want to see it. But what I would think, I would love to see, you know, mail-in. I mean, Colorado's done mail-in for two, three years now, and it's very, very successful. So I mean, that is one way of solving it, is just do all mail-in. But I don't think we have the appetite for that.
All right. Is there any further discussion regarding this topic? All right. Are you prepared to vote? The motion on the floor, and that was seconded by Councilmember Higginson, was to reject the Governor's Amendment for a November election or a move to November. So that is the vote on the floor, and I will take a voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
With, with great hesitation and reluctance, I vote no.
Councilmember Wilder?
I vote no, since I don't have enough information as far as the poll workers. I'd rather see mail-in ballot, but I'll say no right now.
Councilmember Wright?
I echo that hesitation, but I'll, I vote no, too.
Councilmember Perro?
Aye.
Councilmember Higginson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I am agreeing with an aye on that. I, and I, I reserve my comments, but I wanted to hear from everyone else. You know, it is, it's long, drawn out, it's growing. And I think that there can be some measures put in place. As Councilmember Higginson said, there are other areas that have put measurements in place, so. That's, the vote passes for rejection of the Governor's Amendment to First Cities. And Councilmember Perro, will you be communicating that back?
I will be, I will be. I'll communicate that back to the Virginia First Cities Board. Lynchburg's vote is to reject the Governor's Amendment. Now, this will be probably sent out in a letter to all legislators, and I'll tell you, legislators, as Ms. Wright pointed out, they're going to do what they want to do, anyway. There's probably little influence that we're going to have.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yesterday, I got a call from an old college friend who happens to be the mayor of Fairfax City, and he called me to ask me what our position was on that. I assume he was privy to the same information that Councilmember Perro has brought to us. So if there's no objection, I'm going to call him and tell him how we stand on this.
Thank you very much. That's fine. All right. If no further business, next is consideration of a closed meeting for the discussion and consideration of prospective candidates for the position of city manager pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A, 1 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into a closed meeting?
Is it moved?
And second? All right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I do have some discussion that is not prevalent, it shouldn't be done during a closed session. I just want to ask really quickly how we're going to manage this with social distancing. You've gone over it, I think, in an email, but would you go over it with us again? How we're going to run a closed session?
Oh, we're staying in this chamber.
And we'll, we'll clear the room and turn off the microphones and lock the doors, basically?
And that will be gone out of there, the recorder and the.
Right, yes. Yes.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome. All right, thank you. The motion has been made in second, and I will take a vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perro?
Aye.
Councilmember Higginson? Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And aye. So we are now in closed session, and thank you, all of our visitors.